I call this meeting to order. I roll call show that all council members are present. We welcome those in attendance tonight and those who are watching on Sholo TV or electronic device. And we'll start by introduction, starting from the side of the room. And if the council members have a student representing them, the student will say their name and what council member they are representing tonight.
I'm Pierce Hall from Student Council. I'm Senior Class President and I'm representing Rennie Crittenen, Councilman.
Pierce Hall.
Your turn again.
Oh, my turn. Hi, I'm Morgan Edwards. I'm Junior Class Secretary and I'm representing Jean Kelly.
I'm Ben Moses. I'm the Junior Treasurer and I'm representing Councilman Brent Hatch.
I'm Laura Ellsworth and I'm Junior Class President and I'm representing Connie Paccantis.
You did good.
I'm Dalton Perkins. I'm Student Body Vice President and I'm representing Councilman Lee.
I'm Aspen Harmon, Student Body Treasurer and I'm representing Vice Mayor Also.
My name is Bo Williams. I'm Student Body President and I'm representing Mayor Daryl Seymour.
We're grateful to have the students tonight, Student Government with us today. They've been able to shadow many of the people here in the city today. And so it's just our annual meeting where they're going to take charge and we just appreciate you being here.
Tonight, the invocation will be given by Laura Ellsworth, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Dalton Perkins. Those of you who would like to join, please stand.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we're thankful for this day. We're so grateful for the wonderful opportunity it is to be here with all these wonderful people who work so hard for our city to be how it is. We're grateful for the freedoms that we have and that we live in this country. And we're grateful for all those who are off protecting it. And please help that as we are going through this meeting, everything may go as planned. And please help any of those who are sick or afflicted that they may get feeling better soon. And please help that we may receive rain and moisture for this land. And please help that we can always be in help with others and we ask these things in Jesus Christ, man.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberties, justice for all.
Thank you, Laura, and thank you Dalton for the pledge and invocation. Our next item is Call to the Public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is not scheduled on the agenda may do so at this time. The City Council cannot discuss or act on any items presented during Call to the Public. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing no one move forward, we close Call to the Public and move Special. Tonight, we have a presentation by four students, Pierce Hall, Gracie Williams, Laura Ellsworth, and me, Bo Williams, who attended the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Annual Conference in August. I just want to excuse yourself and go on. So recently, the City Council Members in the City of Sholo granted a few of us students to go down and participate in this conference. It was a wonderful experience, was a wonderful learning experience, and we hope to do it again. There's a few things that we'd like to share with you guys that we learned down at this conference. Let's see if I can. There we go. So this is a picture of us that we took down at the conference. There it is. Oh, boy. That's me in the back with my hand on my chin. And then we have everybody else who went, Pierce Hall, Laura Ellsworth, and Gracie Williams. So we got to participate in the Parade of Flags. I had the opportunity to carry the flag of Sholo across this aisle. And it was, it was a really cool experience, kind of filled me with pride to be a part of this city and to just show, just show our flag. And I don't know, it was just something about it that was really cool. And I had to, I had the opportunity to participate in it last year, but not to hold the flag. And this experience was a lot different and it was, I don't know, some, some different that made it great.
So we made this slide, "We Are the Future", because the conference really is focused on us and like how we will be the next generation and what our plans are. And so it talked about financial planning, helping to put a new future and making it more financially stable, anti-sexual harassment, and helping students understand they don't have to be treated how they are. And that they can make a change. And then at the end, it just like it said, it inspired us that we are the future. And then we did, we got to do a getting to know you activity. And so we started off the day by getting to know like other students from all the other cities that allowed their student councils to come on, participate. And we got to hear about all the good things and bad things about other cities. And so some things that we said about our city that are really good are that we are very accepting of newcomers and have many different kinds of people. And we also have a variety of entertaining activities.
All right, so over the course of the time we were there, they gave lots of, they gave different presentations on different things. One was financial literacy. It talks about having, always having an emergency fund in your savings, plan for when there's emergencies. We talked about the 50/20/30 rule. 50% of the money you make put towards your needs, 20% towards savings, and 30 on wants. Talked about credit and loans and having and keeping a good credit score. It talks about, I don't know, the dangers of having a credit card and whatnot. The importance of paying back loans and FICO, how to find your credit score online and whatnot. It's like a little Dave Ramsey show put together. I was told to take notes on this next one. We talked about seeing the signs of sexual and physical abuse. This was an interesting topic, just because you wouldn't think that this goes on in high school a lot, but every once in a while it does happen. So we talked about knowing your self-worth, knowing how you should be treated and seeing how others, how they should be treated. Knowing you're not alone in any situation. There was an activity that we participated in where everybody in the room got around in a big circle. And then they talked about anything that you are, have experienced or have been involved in, you step forward. And then feeling like you were alone, but then when you step forward, seeing that other people have gone through the same things was really comforting, knowing that you're not alone in a situation. We also complimented others. We saw their circumstance in their life and we found how to intervene in those types of situations.
Okay, so and then another activity we did was like a speed networking type thing. We all got into different groups. And they asked us questions and every question, we just switched groups with different people in them. So some of the questions were, "What are your plans after high school?" And almost everyone in the group that we were in said that they wanted to go on to a college or university. Another question was, "Who's your biggest role model?" And almost everyone in our group answered their parents were. So that just kind of showed us that the parents have a big influence and impact on their children in school. Another question was, "What was one of the biggest problems with students in your school?" And a lot of people answered, things including drugs, vaping, and lack of care for school environment, like littering and stuff.
Those were a few things that we learned at this conference. We hope to attend this next year, or at least students that will not be graduating this year, hope to attend again. So we'd like to thank the members of the council for letting us go again and we hope to bring the same thing back to you next year.
Thank you. Just give you guys a great hand.
Our next item is the Consent Calendar. Does any council member wish to pull off an item for discussion? On the Consent Calendar, we have consideration of a proclamation for Constitution Week, approval to deed property to Gregory and Denise Butler, and approval of a roadway assessment, acceptance of the SR260 and Evergreen Lane Turn Lane, City of Sholo Project Number R2319, and City Council Minutes for the September 3 regular meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the Consent Calendar?
For Councilman Crittenen, I move to approve the Consent Calendar as presented.
There's a second.
I am seconding the motion for Vice Mayor Also.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Calendar. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. I'll now read the Constitution Week Proclamation aloud. Whereas we, the people, in order to form a more perfect union, did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States of America to secure the blessings of liberty for ourselves and our prosperity. And whereas it is important that all citizens fully understand the provisions, principles, and meaning of the Constitution so they can support, preserve, and defend it against encroachment. And whereas we must always remember those who risked and sacrificed their lives to protect our freedoms and honor those who stand ready to take action every day to defend our nation, both here and abroad. And whereas the 232nd commemoration of the adoption of the U.S. Constitution on September 17, 1787, provides an historic opportunity for all Americans to learn about and to reflect upon the rights and privileges of citizenship and its responsibilities. And whereas public law, 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week to commemorate the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas the people of the City of Sholo, Navajo County, Arizona, you enjoy the blessings of liberty, the guarantees of the Bill of Rights, equal protection of the law under the Constitution, and the freedoms derived from it. Now therefore, I, Bo Williams, for Daryl Seymour, Mayor, on behalf of the Sholo City Council, do hereby join our state and nation and proclaim the week of September 17 through 23, 2019, as Constitution Week.
Thank you. Just want to share a few things. The Constitution was signed 232 years ago today, September 17, 1787. And we've given each of the students and as well as council members a little copy here of the Constitution. What's interesting is the Constitution, you know, when it was written, they actually went to a meeting from May to November, uh, May until September, when they spent the time writing just specifically the Constitution. Many of our, our great forefathers were there. There were 55 people, all who were there at that time, and only 33 of them signed the Constitution. Since that time, there have been over 11,000 amendments that have been proposed to the Constitution. And only 21 of them have passed. And so we only have 21 amendments to something that has stood the test of time, 232 years. The last amendment to the Constitution was in 2004. And in that, it said that the people of the representatives could not give themselves a pay raise. The only way they could vote for a rate increase or a pay increase, but it would not go into effect until their next, after they were elected. That way, no elected official could vote themselves an increase of pay while they were still in office. I think it's interesting, some of the things we have and the liberties and the rights that we have. And although there's been 33 that have came to the House, of those 11,000, only 21 passed. So it's a great Constitution. It's something that we hope that these youth will continue to learn. And we're grateful for the freedoms and liberties we have. Today is commemoration of that, as well as this week. And hopefully, we'll learn more about the Constitution this week. Thank you.
The first item under New Business is consideration of award of contract for the City Landscape Maintenance, City of Sholo Project Number FM-0520, Mr. Hemisaw.
You can do it, Mr. Cup.
I'm going to do this one.
Okay, great.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and student representatives. The city's fiscal year 2020 budget includes $60,000 for the regular maintenance of lawns and landscaping at city facilities. The current contract with It's Magic, Inc. has expired, so rebidding this work was necessary. The work includes regular maintenance at the following city facilities: City Hall, Library, Airport, Festival Marketplace, Archibec Park, City Campus, Public Works Operations, Public Safety Headquarters, the old police station, the Aquatic Center, Bus Barn, Sholo Senior Center, the entryway landscaping near the State Center and the electronic sign area near Burger King, and also the Brewer Law Office Park on the Deuce Clubs by the Cooley Split. The work also includes as-needed irrigation maintenance and on-call weed control for landscape and sport field areas. Contract will be for a period of three years with an option of two one-year extensions. The base contract for landscape maintenance services is $53,400 to be billed on a monthly basis of $4,450. Contract amount may be adjusted annually based on the Construction Price Index. Project was publicly bid according to statutory requirements with following results. It's Magic, Inc., total bid $54,436.91. The reason the $54,436.91 is different than the $53,400 is because it included line items for irrigation repair and also for weed control. WCD Enterprises, total bid $74,104. Staff recommends awarding the contract for the City of Sholo Landscape Maintenance, City of Sholo Project Number FM-0520, to It's Magic, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $60,000 per year plus construction price index adjustments. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cup. Are there any questions for the staff?
I just want to say they do an excellent job and we appreciate what they have done and look forward to renewing this contract with them.
Do we have a motion?
For Councilman Woman Paccantis, I move to award the contract to City of Sholo Landscape Maintenance, City of Sholo Project Number PRO-820, to It's Magic, Inc. in an amount not to exclude $60,000 per year plus construction price index adjustments.
Do we have a second?
I'm seconding the motion for Councilman Lee.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cup.
The next item under New Business is acceptance of the East McNeil Waterline Replacement, City of Sholo Project Number W-0119, Mr. Hemisaw.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Students. And it's November 6, 2018, meeting the City Council awarded a construction contract to rock country builders in an amount not to exceed the $243,752.50. And that's for the East McNeil Waterline Replacement Project. The budget for the project and the approved FY 2019 capital improvement plan was $300,000. Scope of the work include replacing approximately 2,100 linear feet of aging and deteriorating six-inch AC water line with a new eight-inch PVC water main, installing new water services and fire hydrants. Any concrete or asphalt removed during the project was replaced. The proposed improvements are located behind, in East McNeil, from Central Avenue to Fifth Place. Construction of the East McNeil Waterline is complete and the final cost of the work is $249,654.88. During construction, the contractor encountered unanticipated conditions that resulted in revisions to the scope of work. In West McNeil, the contractor encountered a large amount of rock excavation in the cul-de-sac. There was also a connection to an existing water main in East McNeil that was eight feet deep, much deeper than the normal three to four feet that is normally expected. Additional costs were incurred based on these conditions. Staff recommends accepting the East McNeil Waterline Replacement Project, City of Sholo Project Number W-0119. Approve a change order for $5,902.38, resulting in a final project cost of $249,654.88. Releasing the retainage and initiate the two-year warranty period. I have no attachments. Is there any other further questions?
Thank you, Mr. Hemisaw. Are there any questions for the staff? Do we have a motion?
For Councilman Hatch, I move to accept the East McNeil Waterline Replacement, City of Sholo Project Number W-0119. Release the retainage and initiate two-year warranty period.
Do we have a second?
I am seconding the motion for Councilman Kelly.
We have a motion and a second. Any further, any further discussion?
Thank you. I would like to share with all of you, the most common question asked regarding change orders is why in the world don't you bid them solid? Meaning, you can't have a change order. And as I understand the law, that is legal. Do that. However, if you're the contractor and we do that to you, I say do it to you, we're really doing it to ourselves, then you're forced to bid it as if you're going to hit all of this rock all the way through, because you don't know. And if you didn't have the right to adjust the price based on unforeseen events that developed during the project, you would bid it naturally way high, just to protect yourself. And so I hope that explains somewhat why we don't put in our contracts, "You have to do it for this price no matter what you run into." But we say such things as, "We expect this to dig with a normal operation." But if you have to blast or use a jackhoe or whatever to go through this rock, we allow you to do a raisin brine. And so I hope that helps some of you understand why we do it the way we do and why I would be willing to second this motion. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed? The motion passes six to one. Our next agenda item is summary of current events. Do any council members have anything to report?
Thank you. Couple of things, as if everybody's been driving down the street. Main Street has been doing Phase One project on the corner of Ninth and Deuce Clubs. Put a block wall up. They're getting ready to do Phase Two, to beautify that corner. And I think you're going to like it when it's all done. So hopefully in another month or two, we'll have that done, so you guys can take a look at that. Second is, I had an opportunity last week to go to the student body, well, really, teen court and got to witness everybody in action. And I want to thank Judge Patterson for everything that she does and her time that she puts out on that, all the kids and everything else that happened in there. So it was, it was really fun to have, have time to see that and see how everything works in it. So I want to thank everybody for that. So that's it for me, man.
Anything else to report?
Thank you.
Member Kelly.
Yes, I, my current event is the students here with us tonight, okay? And I want to challenge each of you to take the little pocket Constitution and realize that that has less words in it than most any bill that comes before Congress today as a bill. Read it. It is pretty much in plain English. There's a few paragraphs in there. You go, "What's that mean?" But mostly, it's very straightforward. I challenge you to read it. And I challenge you for one more thing. So far, in your young life, you have set yourself apart from average to be above average. I would like to challenge you never to satisfy yourself with average performance, but always strive to be well above average. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kelly. Great, great advice.
We will now turn the time over to Pierce.
I just have something to mention here. There's going to be a fundraiser being held on Saturday, the 21st, at the Mountain Meadows Park. It will benefit the hospital, Heart Care Cancer, as well as the Sholo Chamber of Commerce. There will be prod ads. If you night and prod ads and the corn and potatoes that have been steamed, really urge yourself to go and give it a try. Begin this coming Saturday.
Anything else to report?
May I have seconds, please?
Ah, geez.
I want to thank, for the last seven years, I want to thank Mr. Whipple and the people that's helping with these kids to get them involved into the council and to the League of Cities and Towns. I know the hours and stuff that you put in for that, so I just want to thank you for your participation and helping these kids out.
Anything else to report? We will now turn the time over to Mayor Seymour for his report.
Thank you. I just want to thank Councilmember Also for having the youth here. It's kind of been his project and he's worked on that and we really appreciate what this has transpired to. Last Tuesday, I had the opportunity of going down to our state legislative where we met with Rusty Bowers, the House Representative Speaker of the House, as well as Sylvia Allen, our Senator of a different territory here, along with our City Council member, I'm sorry, our City Manager and our City Attorney. We're represented also by other delegates of local cities and towns that make up part of the Apache, Navajo County Mayors and Councils Association. What we was able to achieve was a discussion where we started talking a little bit about our water legal fees that we're incurring as a community and how it is very impacting all of us, as well as the other cities and towns. And was able to get the ear of the Speaker of the House and verbally commitments that they will start working with us and helping us to possibly find avenues to help fund some of our adjudication fees that we have. And so I think it was a meaningful meeting. There's much work to be done going forward, but I was grateful to be able to be part of that and help represent the citizens at that time. I have no other things to report, other than we just hope that you guys continue to learn and take heed of what Councilmember Kelly challenged you to do. My mother used to tell me that a C was, meant that I was the best of the worst or the worst of the best. And so don't be a C, okay? Nobody likes you, is what she, she'd tell me if I ever, tried not to make sure I had a C. I'd either go for a D or an A, you know, so it's there. Sure, the tiny City Manager for his report.
Thank you. Few things to report. A free movie in the park will be held this Friday at 7:00 PM at Pandros Field at City Park with a showing of Wonder Park. There'll be concessions available for purchase there, and again, that's a free movie. This Saturday is the annual Fly-... This Saturday is the annual Fly-In Pancake Breakfast from 7:00 to 10:00 AM at the Cholo Regional Airport. Costs is $6 for adults, $4 for kids ages 12 and younger, and free to any military personnel in uniform. There will be judging and awards for show planes, aircraft, and classic cars on display. Youth can fly free as part of the Young Eagles program, and the event is sponsored by the Experimental Aircraft Association. For more information, you contact 928-925-0755, or 928-242-5591. September is the National Library Card Sign-up Month, and we have issued 258 cards so far this month. That was as of yesterday, and there's a few more today. Children who sign up during September for a new card, not a replacement, will receive a free book, and adults will be entered into a drawing to enter a, to win a free ebook. Another item is, ADOT has notified us that drivers on US 60 between Miami and Superior, this is for those that travel to the Valley, you're going through Globe, but anyways, between Miami and Superior, should expect daily closures for their Pinal Creek Bridge Replacement Project, beginning next Monday, September 23. Lane restrictions are scheduled between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM on Mondays through Thursdays, and 7:00 AM to noon on Fridays, beginning in October. Full closures of US 60 are tentatively scheduled between 9:00 AM and 1:00 PM on Tuesdays and Thursdays for about eight weeks. In the public works projects we have going on, some of them, we have work on the Fairway Park Phase Four Waterline Project, it's about a third complete. Work continues on the Sierra Vista Subdivision Road Project. Pulverization of the roads is complete, and they're currently installing the coverts, and then the repaving will take place. Also, we're working, work started this week on the replacement project on the 24th Drive Sewer Line, and then we have other smaller projects going on, 16th Avenue being one of them, for some pulverization and paving on that road. Again, as always, we thank you for your patience as we complete these important projects. And finally, a bit of good news, the Forest Service has notified us that request for proposals for the Fore Forest Restoration Initiative. That's the Fore-Fry Project. For the next long-term, large-scale project or contract to promote sustainable forest product industry and accelerate forest restoration in northern Arizona, has been posted online on the Federal Business Opportunities website. The solicitation seeks to mechanically thin between 605,000 and 818,000 acres over a contract period of 20 years. This is something I know local politicians and groups have been pushing for, for a long time, and it should help with our forest thinning. If you wanted more information on the Fore-Fry Project, you can look at www.f s.usda.gov/fore fry, and they'll have a bunch of information on that Fore-Fry Project. That should be great for our area and for all of northern Arizona. Thank you.
Thank you.
At the high school, we recently just finished up with our Spirit Week for homecoming. We asked the student council, hopefully they'll say it was a success. We had a lot of fun. A lot of planning went into that. We found it as successful. Our homecoming dance was successful, bringing in a lot of money to us. And then today, we had the opportunity to shadow a lot of the city workers, and those who are employed by the city. So that was a wonderful experience, wonderful learning experience, and it brings us appreciation and gratitude for those who work for the city and what goes into making a city run. Thank you. This brings us to scheduling of meetings. Are there any meetings to be mentioned at this time? Seeing no further business, I adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.